Okay, good morning. Welcome to Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, August 25th. I am the, I'm Lancaster County Board Chair Sean Flowerday. With me is Vice Chair and Commissioner Rick Vest and Commissioner Deb Shore, Commissioner Roma Amundson, and Commissioner Krista Yocum. Please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to discuss today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inde.gov. General, under minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, August 18th, 2020.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through August 25th, 2020.
Move approval? Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of. Authorizing and directing Sarah Hoyle to correct non-pro-tongue clerical error in county contracts C-20-502 by interliniating C-19-409 in place of C-19-406. Amendments on the following county contracts. C-16-78 with Language Line Service, Inc., for language interpretation services, phone and video. C-17-737 with TLC Dry Cleaners for annual service, uniform cleaning. C-13-422 with Fish Window Company for annual requirements window cleaning services. C-16-249 with Midwest Medical Transport Company for medical transportation services, Lancaster County Community Mental Health Crisis Center. C-18-516 with Tyler Technologies for licensed software soft code. Amendments to the following county contracts for annual repair services for construction and purpose-built equipment. This includes C-18-510 with Aker Diesel Repair LLC, C-18-511 with Brown Heavy Equipment, C-18-549 with Johnson Diesel Repair, C-18-495 with Hamilton Equipment, C-18-582 with Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company, C-18-536 with NMC, Inc., C-18-537 with RDO Truck Center, C-18-512 with Rose Equipment LLC, C-18-497 with Truck Center Companies Lincoln, C-18-496 with Titan Machinery, Inc., C-18-498 with Vermeer High Plains. Right-of-way contracts with the following: Ronald and Myra Morrison, South 100th Street and West Hallam Road in amount of $1,243; Michael A. Wenzel, North 14th Street and West Wesley Road in a total amount of $6,759. Change order number one to county contract C-20-398 with Straight Line Striping, Inc., for additional three miles of pavement markings at various locations. Change order number two to county contract C-20-282 with Pavers, Inc., for an overrun of asphalt SLX.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second. We have a motion, excuse me, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is unfinished business. This is a request for an exceptional circumstance award under Personnel Rule 17-14, Bracket D, for a $500 award to Matt Anthony, Department of Corrections, 2019 Employee of the Year.
Good morning. Brad Johnson, Director of Lancaster County Department of Corrections. We're here to recognize Ant Anthony as Employee of the Year for 2019. It's a little late in 2020 for 2019, but there were a lot of things going on this spring, so it kind of got bumped back. That doesn't diminish our appreciation for Anthony. He does, he's one of our training co-coaches, and I can't overstate the importance of that position. You know, our success is based on the folks that work for us and for you, and these folks make sure that they're the best that they can be. So I think there's a write-up that he could, he could read if he would like, like to.
I would like to nominate Officer Matt Anthony for the 2019 Lancaster County Department of Corrections Employee of the Year. Officer Matthew is the second shift field training officer. On a regular day, this specialized position comes with a tremendous amount of responsibility, knowledge, and integrity. In comparison to normal workload for this position, to say that Officer Anthony excelled and greatly exceeded expectations would be the grandest of understatements. To put this in perspective, a typical workload for field training officers consists of three to five new staff for whom they are responsible for training. There was not a time during the past year that Officer Anthony had less than 10 and at least, and at one time as many as 18. He was responsible for assisting them at their posts, ensuring their training blue books were filled out, and providing information regarding their performance to myself and our Sergeant, FTO. In addition to all of this, Officer Anthony met with me on a regular basis to assist me in scheduling them in areas that needed to work. Managing 18 new employees' schedules alone was a task. Officer Anthony communicated effectively with all of the new staff and was able to effectively prioritize who required the most assistance. By him communicating with me regarding the scheduling of the new staff, it made it possible for him to more effectively manage them. He never fell behind, nor did he complain. Officer Anthony has set the example for new staff to follow, and he has set that bar high. He shows them patience, persistence, and time management, all in addition to their regular duties. Last of all, he encourages them to communicate with their supervisors and the importance of the team effort we strive for. I cannot think of anyone more deserving of this award.
Officer Anthony, on behalf of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners and all of our employees in the residents of Lancaster County, it's an honor to present this award to you for Employee of the Year. The most important asset we have is our employees, and knowing that you are doing such an outstanding job in training new officers that come on the job means a great deal. It keeps the officers safe, and it keeps our inmates safe, and that's of the highest priority. So I know there's a cash award that goes along with that, but here's a token, and I know that you have some fellow employees here, I'm sure we'd like to meet, and then anyone else that you have here that's special to you. So again, congratulations.
Thank you so much. (applause) Okay. Well, thank you for the work you've done. A good FTO, speaking as a former CEO myself, a good FTO can just make or break an entire shift. I mean, they set the tone for a whole generation of officers as they come in, and it just, it, it's absolutely an invaluable position. Thanks for what you've done. Thank you all for being here to support him, and thank you for your service to our community.
Do we need a motion on that?
I think technically we do need a motion on that, don't we?
All right. I will move that we award the exceptional circumstance award to Officer Matt Anthony. Second. We've got lots of seconds on that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Very good.
Number five is a public hearing. This is Lancaster County's proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you were about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. All right. Good morning, Dennis Meyer, Lancaster County Budget and Fiscal Officer. So today, I just want to start the budget hearing off by just kind of going over some of the numbers that we've been talking about. Just to remind everybody, we filed our proposed budget by the end of July with the Clerk's Office. Very little changes have really occurred from that timeframe to this timeframe. We'll quick kind of talk about that, but I'm just going to kind of refresh everybody's memory on where we're at on certain things and maybe what we had to do to get to this point. So let's first start off with, by, let's talk about the property tax rate. So the proposed budget was completed using the property tax rate of 28.1576. That is the same levy that Lancaster County levied for in the previous year. We, in the proposed budget, we included a projection of 2.75%. The actual valuations that came in actually showed up at 2.79%. No, that's fine. That's fine. Okay, so, so the actual valuation came in at 2.79%, which with that, that generates about an additional $32,253. As we go through here, we'll kind of talk about what could, what could happen with that piece of it. Let's hop into our budget of expenditures. The budget of expenditures right now is projected at to be $200 million, 938, 803. That is actually a 1.33% decrease in comparison to last year's amended budget. So let's talk about how we kind of got there. So we had the budget hearings, we sat down, we took a look at it, and we came up with an estimated shortfall of about $11 million. That included the increase in expenditures, it included some decrease in revenues, it included us trying to adjust our cash reserve, and at that time, it was also projecting a decrease in fund balance. So through our process, we did a few different things. The Board denied 12 new position requests. We, we transfer property tax out to other funds throughout the budget. The transfer amount to the county engineer's office was reduced from the previous year. We also asked departments to give back approximately 1% reduction on their requests. And so through that process, we reduced our expenditures by over $6 million. We were also able to increase our revenues by about $3 million. Our cash balance, our fund balance actually came in better than projected, so that's how we were able to kind of take that $11 million shortfall and get to where we're at today. So when we talk about today's $200.9 million budget, what you can see there is a little over 41% of that is really salaries and benefits for employees. That's our biggest expenditure out there. When you look at our three largest budgets that we deal with at Lancaster County, county engineer is number one, corrections is the second largest, and the county sheriff's office is the third largest. So when, when you see some of those numbers, it won't, some of it won't surprise you that public safety is really the, the largest piece or the largest function of the county budget. Public safety really is about 44.5%, real close to that. We split public safety between law enforcement and other, but what you're really getting into is, you know, corrections, sheriff, few services. On the other side, you get into the courts, you get into the county attorney, you get into the public defender, you get into items like that. General government becomes our second largest function, and that really becomes our second largest function because that's where our transfers take place. So anytime we're transferring property tax in between our budget, that is part of general government. Public works then is our third largest, which really includes our county engineer's office. General fund. Our general fund really drives our property tax request number. So our general fund, total budget of expenditures is 123, 358, 224. And, you know, two things this, this budget really does for us is it establishes what our property tax request amount's going to be, and then it also sets up what our spending authority is for the year. So when I mentioned the $123 million number, that is really setting up what is our spending authority for fiscal year '21. Our general fund increased by 0.56% over the previous year. Couple, couple items that we're dealing with in '21 is the county board has opted for new body cameras for the sheriff's office, and, and we're going to actually get our HR payroll system up implemented around October 1st this year. So those, those are kind of the two items.
Like it or not.
Like it or not, it's happening. So I think I've been talking about that HR payroll system for a few different budgets. So hopefully, when I'm up here talking about budget stuff next year, I'm not talking about implementation of the HR payroll system.
No, it'll be securis.
Budget of revenues. When we talk budget of revenues, you will see that for Lancaster County, taxes are the largest source of revenue, almost at 55%. And when you, when we talk about taxes, we're really talking about property tax, we're talking about motor vehicle tax, and we're talking about inheritance tax. In Lancaster County, we take our inheritance tax funds, we dump them into our general fund, and we use it just as a regular revenue source to help offset any costs that we, that we have during the year. Charges for services and fees are, are second, which are a little less than 20%. One of the things that we're, that we're dealing with on the revenue side for, for 2021 is we have also been working with federal and state agencies as we try to figure out what kind of reimbursements are allowable for COVID-19. So with that in mind, one of the things with the additional $32,000 that is coming in from that additional valuation increase is this COVID-19 reimbursement, as, as we get into it more and more, some of the budgeted numbers that, that I included in there are maybe, we're maybe hopeful at times, as I've, as I've been working with FEMA and stuff like that. My recommendation for that additional $32,000 would be just to reduce our, our revenues expected and then keep the expenditures the same, and other than that change, the proposed budget would remain the same. Another piece that we talked about, cash reserve. We started trying to tackle cash reserve last year. As I, as I've said, GFoa that's out there, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends a cash reserve of no less than really two months, which is really about This year, through the budget process, we are moving our cash reserve up by an additional $2 million, which would just get us to a little bit over $10 million. That sounds like, that sounds like a pretty decent move, but when we still take a look at it, that cash reserve is still only 8.2% of our general fund. So we've got about a month that we've got sitting there. So as I've been mentioning, this topic of discussion will be a topic of discussion really every year out, when we start talking budget stuff, because with, with the budget of expenditures increasing, if that reserve stays the same, our percentage just goes down. And as I mentioned, with the large dollar amount that comes in from property tax, that really means we live off of tax collections really two times a year. So living between the, the two payments coming in, that cash reserve is, is a huge player in the game. Fund balance for this year, as I mentioned, we ended up right about the same, so there was no, really no negative or positive effect, kind of kept us right where we needed to be. Employees, FTEs for the year, for 2021, FTEs are increasing by eight. We're hiring three new FTEs for our centralized payroll team, which deals with the new payroll system. We've got an IT tech position for the body camera program. The sheriff's office hired a patrol division deputy during the fiscal year of '20, and then we've got two new positions that are being paid with federal funds over in our community corrections department. When you take a look at our FTEs, you'll see the same players that are in the largest budgets are the ones with the largest FTEs, which, when salaries and benefits are one of our largest expenditures, that, it only really makes sense. So you can see the numbers, corrections, sheriff, and county engineer. Last thing that I'll just remind you again is on the property tax side, our total amount for property taxes is a little less than $82.5 million, and that's keeping it at the same levy that we had last year, which is 28.1576. So those, those are kind of the items that I, that I want to kind of talk about. When we, when we go to resolutions, we will deal with three of them. We will deal with allocating the 15 cents. We will vote on the additional 1% for the lid on restricted funds, and then there will be one for the adoption of the budget. Questions?
You've done yeoman's work this year.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on Lancaster County proposed budget?
Okay, since this is a public hearing, I'll go ahead and swear you in. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you all for letting me be here today. My name is Christopher Prosh. I am the Public Policy Director for the Lincoln Independent Business Association at 620 North 48th Street. This past month, the Lincoln Independent Business Association has been working closely with numerous Leba members, Lancaster County budget personnel, and elected officials to help us better understand the details of Lancaster County budget. We formulated a series of questions that were answered in a timely manner, and we thank the county commissioners, Mrs. Pam Dingham and Mr. Dennis Meyer for meeting with Leba staff and members. They were very helpful in helping us better understand the county budget. Our major focus in looking at the budget was threefold: public safety, government transparency, and infrastructure. In regards to public safety, we want to thank the Lancaster County commissioners and staff for addressing the issue of public safety with the consideration and approval of 70 new body cameras for the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. During these difficult times, it is important to remember that public safety is paramount and that the Lancaster County Sheriff's Department is incredibly valuable to our county. They are a true asset to the community, and we appreciate them. Secondly, government transparency. Secondly, government transparency is key to the checks and balances between elected officials and the people in understanding exactly what is happening across the county. After looking into Lancaster County budget, we noticed an increased attempt by the county officials to be more transparent. We applaud the Lancaster County commissioners and staff for creating an online portal for all residents to view at their discretion. Through the website lancasteropengov.com, the residents get a direct look into the county's finances. This is a great first step in addressing the many issues of increased transparency that we need from our elected officials. We appreciate Mr. Meyer's workload, work loading the data onto the website, and look forward to his continued efforts to provide additional details. Additionally, we want to thank the county staff and commissioners for being committed to not raising the property tax levy during these uncertain times for business owners. Property valuations have increased, and therefore property taxes will still increase. Business owners are suffering, making tough calls, reducing their budgets, and furloughing hardworking people. Lastly, infrastructure. The roads and bridges of Lancaster County need immediate attention. We request that the county place a higher emphasis on infrastructure needs, which will drive commerce for our community and our county. With the infrastructure capacity needing more attention, we urge the county to pay close attention to the wasteful spending through state mandated expect expenditures. We recently became aware that the county is forced to spend four hundred thousand dollars per year for a building space that is completely empty. We hope the commissioners will take a great efforts to lobby senators to direct it by the situation. Also, during our review of the budget and a few meeting agendas, we have become aware of the large amount of money that is given to nonprofits. In the near future, we would like to visit with the commissioners about the source of funds and criteria for awarding these dollars. We appreciate our elected officials at every level of government and their commitment to Lancaster County. We want to make sure that transparency is being offered properly to the residents and business owners during these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Christopher.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm Larry Hettkins, eight-six-hundred Northwest One Hundred and Twelve Street, Malcolm, Nebraska. And good morning, Chairman Flower Day and members of the commission. I appear before you this morning representing the Lancaster County Farm Bureau on behalf of its over five thousand members in Lancaster County, and we would like to add our voices to the support of the Lancaster Events Center Fairgrounds. We have a long history with the Lancaster County Ag Society and the LEC Fairgrounds. Our organization has supported the event with financial support since its inception with over fifty thousand dollars worth of direct contributions plus many private contributions from our members. We see the value of the LEC Fairgrounds for all of Lancaster County. We have provided support for events and personnel for projects like the Pedal Tractor Pull, Fund at the Farm, and during the county fair, as well as supporting ag awareness festivals, which impact over two thousand schoolchildren, youth from all over Nebraska, all over Lancaster County every single year. We realize financial times are challenging right now, but feel confident that the county commissioners are looking at creative and innovative ways to meet these challenges. We wish to add our support to your efforts as long as they do not involve increasing property taxes again. We realize that makes a very challenging time in these challenging times that we now are living through, but we do have faith in you and appreciate the hard decisions that you've had to make this year. The LEC Fairgrounds have become a great source of community involvement and revenue, this year notwithstanding, of course. They provide economic and educational benefits across the city, county, and state, and even the nation with events that have been bringing to our county. The list is too long to share today, but highlights include the Nebraska Ag Expo, the largest indoor egg show in the U.S., which is an opportunity for businesses, large and small, from across the nation to showcase the innovations that Americans are known for and provide three days of revenue for local restaurants, hotels, and other businesses. We only hope and pray that we're able to do that again this December. The City of Lincoln Library Sale allows people of all economic situations opportunities to purchase books and other items that normally would not be possible. We have been a proud supporter of the Lancaster County Fair for many years because we know the benefits youth receive from involvement in 4H and FFA are not only for their years in those organizations, but for their entire lives. They're an investment in the future. Over seven hundred 4H and FFA members were able to participate in the fair this year, even under these trying times, showcasing over six thousand projects. We hope you will continue to look at revenues to help support the Lancaster County Events Center Fairgrounds as they try to come up with four hundred thousand dollars that they desperately need to make their loan payments and commitments. They are looking to get through this unprecedented time, and on a personal note, I want to thank all of you county commissioners, and it's good to see Mr. Durbin again and Mr. Nolte, a longtime friend. We actually served on the school board together over forty years ago. You've had a tough time. I want to commend each and every one of you for what you've done this year. You've had to make hard decisions. You've taken the resources that you've had, and you've applied them fairly, and we know that you'll always do a fair and equitable job. Not an easy job to say no to friends and to good projects, but you've had to do it this year. We appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. This is the seventh budget that I have been involved in during my tenure as county engineer. There are people who state that no amount of money can fix our infrastructure program, problem. However, we know that's not true because in twenty-nineteen, this board created the Lancaster County Transportation Strategy Task Force. The report issued by the task force in twenty-eighteen noted an annual critical infrastructure funding gap of fifteen million dollars. Critical bridges make up nine million of that fifteen million. In FY twenty-twenty, the growth of Lancaster County, the growth in Lancaster County coupled with increased valuations, a levy increase, and a reduction in the allocation to the RTSD added approximately ten-point-six million new dollars. In FY twenty-one, that increase is approximately two-point-three new million dollars. According to my old-school math, that's twelve-point-nine million. I'm not asking for all of the money to go to infrastructure. I sit in these meetings like you. I know we have many issues. It would, however, be a start to pledge fifty percent of the new money to infrastructure. Once again, I have to ask, like I did on July fourteenth, to this board, if not now, then when? Seven years. Every year, I think it's going to be the year that the county engineer's budget request is going to be granted. It must be me. This budget request is typically only one and a half to two percent of infrastructure needs in our community. That request has been repeatedly denied and cut. This year, the county engineer's budget request was cut by three-point-eight million dollars. In addition, our highway allocation projections from the gas tax are down nearly one and a half million dollars. The budget you are about to approve has only one bridge, one lone bridge, and no new paving for Lancaster County. This means that ten bridges, which are currently closed, as shown on my map, will remain closed for at least another year. This means that South Ninety-Eighth Street and Southwest Fourteenth Street will wait at least another year for paving. This means that less than ten percent of the critical needs of the county engineer's department are being met. Why is this acceptable? All of you stated in our July fourteenth meeting that roads and bridges were not your priority. Some of you said the rural citizens have said in wheel tax meetings that they did not want roads and bridges. I will assure you, that is not true. The rural citizens don't want another tax. I heard them in those meetings. I want the rural community to know that I will continue to fight for additional funding for roads and bridges. I want you to know that the dollars put to construction contracts help local businesses provide a number of jobs in Lancaster County. They help emergency responders serve the rural community. They help our children get to and from school. They help our farmers get their goods to market. Good roads and bridges help our community be better. That's why I came to you seven years ago and asked to be appointed county engineer. That's why I've run to be county engineer twice. I am dedicated to making the roads and bridges of Lancaster County better, and I will continue to fight for the rural communities in order to meet that goal.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on the public hearing for the proposed budget? Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, we will go ahead and close the public hearing then and move down to new business.
New business six A is a resolution in a matter of final allocation of levy authority to all political subdivisions subject to Lancaster County levy authority.
Okay, so this resolution here is in regard to the fifteen cents that we have been talking about, and I just want to kind of just go on record saying that with this resolution being adopted today, that Lancaster County is within that required fifteen cents. We're real close, but through there, these dollar amounts will then be sent out to the political subdivisions, the Ag Society, the fire districts, the RTSD, so that they have the ability to then take these dollars, finalize their own budgets, and then file their own budgets so that levies can then be set. But the resolution today is within the allowable fifteen cents, and once approved today, I'll send that out to everybody that participates in that.
I will move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Flower Day.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six B is a resolution in a matter of exceeding the budget restrictive funds limit for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year by an additional one percent.
So this resolution is the additional one percent for the lid calculation. So we have, we have gone through all the numbers, we've calculated the lid. All this additional one percent does is increase the base amount. Property tax has been determined really before we even look at the lid, so it doesn't really drive property tax. It just allows for us to increase our base so that if something down the road occurs, we haven't left anything on the table, so.
I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Flower Day.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a resolution in a matter of approving the Lancaster County budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
The attachment A to this resolution is set up to take that additional thirty-two thousand, reduce our projections for COVID-19 reimbursement, and increase it onto the property tax side, expenditure stay the same, so it's just kind of that one adjustment that's warranted this year.
I move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Before we pass Dennis's last new business item, I just want to echo the comments that Chris made earlier representing Leba about recognizing Dennis for his efforts to make this process so transparent and very easy for our residents just to log on to the website and get their questions answered, and like you said, break it down to whatever level of detail they are interested in. So you took that initiative, and I just wanted to formally say thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. I just kind of think that's part of the gig, so. I will keep adding information, whether it's information the public wants, whether it's information we feel that we need to get out there. We'll just kind of, as those items come up, we'll just kind of keep throwing stuff out into the portal.
It's the way it should be. It makes it better for the whole community.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Flower Day.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a resolution accepting Brent Myers' bid in the amount of one hundred and six thousand dollars for property generally located at three hundred Tyler Street, Bennett, Lancaster County.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Myers here? Nope. Okay.
Mr. Myers was the high bidder at the auction that we held a couple weeks ago. This is for the Bennett Building, which no longer meets our needs for facilities. We can no longer park a truck or a motor grader in it due to just the constraints of the building, and so we were happy to see this bid come in much higher than the appraisal was.
I was going to say that. Proof that auctions work. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Flower Day.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six E is a resolution in a matter of instituting eminent domain proceedings against Philip R. Pfeiffer, track number two.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer, and Alex Olson, Lancaster County right-of-way So this is a pipe, unfortunately, that has already been built. However, the erosion control on either side of it has not been able to be completed because we have been unable to come to an agreement with the landowner, and so we have today an appraisal for the property that we're willing to enter into the record, as I believe is required, and we're here to answer any other questions you may have.
I think we've talked about this numerous times, and I would move approval of this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Thank you for joining us today, sir.
Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Flower Day.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is an agreement of JEO for survey environmental H&amp;H analysis, design, plan, preparation, and permitting services for Lancaster County Bridge X-129. Engineers shall command said work upon notice to proceed and complete all work on or before February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. The cost to the county shall not exceed one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, thirty dollars.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. Bridge X-129, as shown on this exhibit, is located on Stagecoach Road. It is very near one of our state recreation areas. It's been closed for some time now. It has twin-T construction to it that is failing, and so what we're trying to do is at least get the engineering done this year so that we have hopes to build this bridge next year. And this bridge is on a paved section of road, so it also meets our criteria to be a priority.
I will move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Pam, are funds allocated in the upcoming budget for this bridge because you said no bridges next year?
Correction, Commissioner Shore, what I said was one lone bridge, and that is Bridge F-88. F-88. You may recall from our meeting on July 14th that this was, this construction for this bridge was cut, was cut from the budget. And so this is simply the engineering for this bridge, and hopefully at some point in the future, we'll be able to come up with funding.
You're correct. You said no new pavement, and I, in my mind, said no new bridges, but it was one lone bridge.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Flourday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 6G is a federal equitable sharing agreement, an annual certification report for the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office regarding equitable sharing activity of drug forfeiture funds for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
I will move approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Flourday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is federal equitable sharing agreement, an annual certification report for the Lancaster County Attorney's Office regarding equitable sharing activity for drug forfeiture funds for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Flourday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is a ratification of the interlocal agreement with the City of Lincoln on the 2020 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program Award.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Flourday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is Nebraska Crime Commission subrecipient audit acknowledgement for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Flourday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is special conditions for the 2020 Justice Assistance Grant. Lancaster County diverting the school-to-prison pipeline in the amount of $160,813 for the time period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Flourday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 7 is update on COVID-19 and Lancaster County response.
Anyone have any information on the COVID-19 situation or Lancaster County's response to it? Only that we got moved at the end of last week, got moved back into the yellow by just a hair. I think that that's an improvement. We are seeing a drop in our cases, and other parts of the state aren't. So we should continue all the precautions that we have started. So glad to see it. Next up is public comment.
Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on the agenda, may do so at this time.
Any members of the public here to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, let's move to announcements.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a special staff meeting on Tuesday, August 25, 2020, immediately following the regular meeting in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a legislative retreat on Thursday, August 27, 2020, at 8:30 a.m. in the Sheriff's Training Rooms B and C of the Hall of Justice. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, September 1, 2020, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building, with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can reach at 402-441-7447 or commission@lancasterne.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Flourday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We are adjourned.